Hello everyone, this is a special session for me, Mary Anne from Reilling Light Tarot Astrology and Spirituality. Wherever you are watching in this world, a huge, huge shout out to you. I'll be recording today, my usual Sunday in the northern hemisphere video will be a day, a day late because of this extra video today. And I've got some family commitments on Sunday morning, which is my Monday morning, just to confuse things. Anyway, you get the, the picture, there'll be videos now, today and next week as well. Okay, where do I start? Uh, where do I start? Um, gosh, gosh, hmm. Well, I guess with a humble thank you. I guess I start with a humble thank you. Uh, I've been absolutely overwhelmed with the kindness and loyalty and love and goodness that my viewers have been showing me since the US election. And I'm only going to speak about this now to tell you how grateful I am and then I want the focus off me, it's not, not on me. This is about my viewers, um, and, uh, and service to one another. Um, and care toward one another in these very, very troubled times. But let me just take a minute right now to express my gratitude for, uh, for all of you. I took, uh, well, I've gone through it because I held comments and reviewed them before I released them. As a result of trolling, uh, after my election video, I, I, I've got through about nine thousand comments. And I think there's probably two or three thousand more left to go. I'm manually going through them. Um, and by about 10 o'clock last night, I had to stop. It's taken me the better part of a day to do that. That's okay too, because every time I read a supportive comment, my heart lifted. And, um, I want you to know that this is a safe, safe space for you. In the description of my channel and in the dropdown menu, you will see I've stated very clearly, this is a resistance channel. Uh, so know that anybody who's here, this is a resistance channel. Uh, I will use whatever means that, uh, that spirit wants to give me. You know, light workers come in all shapes and sizes and ways of contributing to this world. It's not in your way that you may think, uh, it's not in, uh, the way that you do things. This is, this is about me, my, my space, my abilities, my decisions, my learning, my evolution. And what most of all, what spirit wants me to bring forward to you in the way that I choose to do that. And I've kind of likened it like the, uh, let's say Trump, the president-elect, if you want to call him that, is to me, uh, like, uh, like very perp-like in his, uh, in his demeanor, demeanor and his history as well. And for those of us, uh, who have, um, faced this type of thing, we are there to bring certain things to the light. I want to read you something, um, I want to read you something that, um, I got very triggered the next day. After I'd done your reading, I went to the doctor and I got a dear message from a friend, uh, who's just reaching out to see if I was okay. And I wanted to illustrate, uh, just bear with me, I wanted to illustrate the impacts of a Trump reelection. Uh, and what that means for, uh, the US and those around the world, and particularly for women. Because in a quite clever way, he went after women, knowing that he would mobilize the males in the electorate. And I'll get to more of that in a minute. Um, and some of my thoughts that I've been gathering up since, uh, in the last few days, it's been very insightful. Let me just say insightful. So, uh, yesterday my own doctor start, I went to the doctor, a routine visit. Yesterday, my own doctor started to say Trump's reelection was good for Australia. I let him have it while backing out of his room, literally, I felt very, um, uh, unsafe in that, in that, in that room. I said to him, I remember the grab them by the pussy remarks, the rape, uh, the liability for the rape of E Jean Carroll found in a New York court in amongst his peers and a judge. It's, uh, it, it, it was proven defamation and of course rape. The evidence of his sex with a porn star that was presented at the New York trial. The fraud, massive fraud, uh, that was found by a judge, uh, an eminent judge, uh, in New York. The profiteering, uh, the figures that the media released when he was in the White House, I think it was seven million that we, uh, we knew of. The vile hateful remarks against women that we all heard. His Nazi light rally, uh, at the Madison Square Garden and his comments hateful, hurtful, terrible comments on migrants. Um, now my doctor was originally from Mauritius and I said, you originally from Mauritius should know better. Migrants poisoning the blood of Australians. Well, the same rhetoric could be migrants poisoning the blood of Australians. You of all people, I have listened to the Epstein tapes and I have heard Epstein speak of his close friend Trump. And there are more tapes there which the media refused to publish. Well documented friendship with Jeffrey Epstein, the pedophile, the deceased pedophile, abuser of women. So I said, as I, as I left, I said, I'll talk, he, as I left, the doctor then turned to me. Thirty-three years I've been going to him and he said, I'll talk to you when you're less angry. I said, I am not angry, I am disgusted. He said, at least he, he will be a good guard dog and protect you. Just let those words drop. I said, I do not need any protecting and certainly not from a man found liable for rape. So you see how this works and has always worked. Now, I said to the doctor, do you understand what Trump and Vance have done to women and to all of us? So this is a resistance channel, uh, in the same way that psychics are called in to help police find the perpetrator. I'll be using my gifts in whatever way, it's got nothing to do with hate. This has got to do with staring down the facts in front of us, the evidence on tape, the evidence on film, the evidence in a courtroom of exactly what type of man now has found his pathway back to the White House. And so I understand the lovely light workers that want to take it another way and go, what do we have to learn in this life? Well, right now I'm in the trenches, I'm in the trenches with everybody else. And I see this as a resistance channel and, um, we'll learn and evolve along the way. Maybe we'll solve some things as well. Okay. So having said that, uh, I put out a call to, so this is really a chin wag. We're still unpacking the election and so this is a chin wag and I do have some questions to ask in a minute and I'll get to that. Anyone who's impatient and whatever, just go or fast forward, I don't, I don't really care. Uh, there's a new attitude that sprung up, uh, around, I think, America and on social media, we do not give to whatevers, you know, the saying. Okay, so let's, uh, get back to the gratitude. When I, uh, did my aftermath reading, I talked a lot about the, uh, oh no, I do have one more gratitude thing to, to say. So thank you to all my viewers, beautiful, beautiful people that you are. Thank you to the other readers, uh, on YouTube that, um, saw my video and, uh, were just as heart, uh, heart sickened by all of it, including how I was looking. And, uh, they, uh, reached out in a lovely way through viewers telling people to go on my channel and show me some love. You know who you are. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, I, I just do not, do not forget stuff like that. I don't forget my loyal viewers, nor do I forget the support that my lovely, uh, community has given me. Okay. Lots and lots and lots to unpack. There's a couple of aspects in relation to, uh, the potential election fraud that we spoke about. I asked people to check their ballots and in the comments section, and I'm more to get through, uh, the comment section I talked about, uh, uh, go and check your ballot. A lot of people did that and there are stories coming back to me, again, this same trusted community. Uh, women that I know are regular viewers, uh, that have sent me emails and postal stuff and I know that they're not trolls. They talk about their experience, uh, with, um, some around ballots, uh, signature matching. Um, it's interesting, I'll get to that too. Uh, but their sign, their ballots being rejected because of the, uh, signatures didn't line up and yet they've been voting, uh, for years and years and years. They are real people, they should have, they should have been allowed to vote, but they just weren't allowed to because this signature stuff was wrong. There are many things that can affect a signature. It's, uh, I think The Atlantic did a piece, um, that signature matching is almost like an imprecise sort of science. Uh, a lot of youth were turned away because they, they just don't have any signatures, uh, there to correlate. Elderly people's signatures vary, um, there's all sorts of reasons, go and look at the accuracy of signature matching. And you'll see that some of that went on as well. A lot of people just didn't find, they've gone and done the ballot checker and find that, that either their ballot hasn't been received or, or it's not there. Uh, and there are many, many, um, many, many incidents of that that are coming over my, uh, channel. And they've of course then taken, written to the White House saying, please can you do a recount? And so for those people, I don't know, who may be watching now, uh, whether there are other podcasters or whatever, please don't say that, um, that questioning results, uh, is embarrassing. This is a, or shouldn't be done, or it's a conspiracy theory. Everybody's got a right to have faith and trust in their election infrastructure. This isn't a MAGA thing. Um, we know what they did, they did it very aggressively. Uh, I find that, um, the, the voters that are asking for this aren't aggressively saying the election has been stolen. They're saying that they have doubts. They're saying that their ballots are just not being found. Or they're saying that why all of a sudden was my signature not, not accepted? Or one lady in Kansas, uh, and I've screenshot that when she went to vote, there were no democratic choices on the voting machines. Well, sure, a glitch, but people deserve and have the right to say, we don't have faith and trust. Why would, why wouldn't we be mindful of who and what we're dealing with? In Pennsylvania, um, the senate seat there, Casey and McCormick, the Associated Press called the god bloody election for that senate seat before a hundred thousand provisional ballots had been counted and mail-in ballots had been counted. And Casey was only behind by thirty-three thousand votes. Now McCormick is trying to get those votes thrown out. That was the one senate seat that I said, you're gonna see some argy-bargy here. Don't, don't count that senate seat race out. The house hasn't had a final call, um, yet. We'll see what happens with the house for the Democratic Party. Um, there's, there is a lot to unpack, uh, around this election. Um, men apparently got a text in California, there's another girl there that talked about this. She was on the polling station, they received a text saying, come in and vote, uh, for the president. You don't have to do down ballots, but just come in and vote for the president. Um, whether these are true or not, I know that the feedback from my viewers is absolutely spot on because I know, I know them. And, um, they're rightly demanding some, some kind of investigation. We have an unfolding, um, so we're not being conspiracy theory, theory theorists. We're just very cognizant of who and what we're dealing with, a man that has been found, uh, guilty of massive fraud in New York. Half a million dollar bill there that he's got to pay for fraud. A man who's a serial liar and, and, uh, with Elon Musk, who's been in touch with Putin. I found Russian, uh, Russian interference in the election. Uh, and we don't have to argue about that because thirty-two bomb threats in, in swing states in democratic counties. And, uh, when it was taken to court to extend the time to, to make up for the time the booths were closed, the judges said, no, we can't extend the time. Here's what I think happened. So there's all sorts of theories about code being replaced in voting machines before the codes were uploaded into the voting machines. I'll let the cyber security branch of the US government deal with those, uh, implications or allegations or whatever. Here's what I think happened from everything that I've looked at over the last forty-eight odd hours. I feel there were some things that need to be unpacked and I don't know by whom, because the media's not doing it. Podcasters, other than the gutsy Midas Touch Network might do it. Uh, but other podcasters are kinda more going down the pathway of, oh, let's look at what went wrong. Here's, here's what I think. I think that this victory of Trump's has been four years in the planning, probably longer, probably eight years in the planning. I feel that they set a number of traps that all, when all combined, threw an election to them. Now, we must remember that Russian disinformation against Tim Walz documented against the Democratic Party before the election and on the day of the election was huge. We must remember if, uh, if, if the Russians weren't intent on getting elected, uh, getting Trump elected, why did they? Why, why did they pose as the FBI and tell everybody to vacate those booths? So I feel, uh, that there were traps in various parts of the election cycle, if I can, or system, that I can just say that. When it all added up, gave Trump the advantage. Were they legal or were they illegal? Well, I guess bomb threats are illegal. Um, were, was the calling of the election too soon, as in the case of Senator, Senator Bob Casey and, uh, his challenger McCormick? Uh, was that wrong? Absolutely. It just, uh, by, uh, Associated Press and whoever else, uh, absolutely was wrong. Because then it allows McCormick to challenge the votes that aren't counted. Was there some smaller level at the grassroots level fraud? Yeah. It's, it's highly possible, given the number of people who's saying they can't find their ballots, their ballots were sent back. Or they didn't receive them, or they were never got a ballot. I don't know, overseas viewer who said she requested a ballot months, you know, at the earliest possible time, it never arrived. All of these smaller things were done to create a larger, a larger result. And then you, you, you couple that with the way Trump fought this election. Deliberately targeting women so that men would rally against them. What does that say about men? Well, there are good ones and bad ones. Coupled with even the, the remarks about Latinos. You're not gonna like it when I say this, Latinos voted in record for Trump, that's a fact. Despite the, the denaturalization process that begins today, according to Stephen Miller, um, why, why did they do that? Well, they, they come from impoverished backgrounds. Why, that's why they seek to live in America, uh, the capitalistic beacon on the hill. Uh, and their values, they want more. But then Trump tells them they're nothing, they're nothing. What do they do? Again, this is psychology. They want to be part of the club. They want to be the part of the club that's rejecting them. And so there was a lot of, this is what Trump does as the magician. A lot of this kind of psychology that nobody's talking about. Nobody's talking about this, the way that he is very, very good at manipulating psychological weaknesses, flaws, motivations in people. So you couple with a very clever and dark campaign that we thought was a joke. No, it was very seriously working at a psychological level with these things that went on, many things. Not big enough to draw attention, but small enough to create a cumulative, a cumulative, uh, impact. Now, that's as I see it. Were the Democrats fleet of foot? No. Were they able to counteract any of this? Obviously not. Does there need to be soul searching? Absolutely yes. Is it time for a good, hard remake, uh, of, uh, one of, one of the major parties in the, in the, in the US? Absolutely. And all of that will happen, all of that will happen. Was there major, major criminal fraud? The jury's still out on that. I'm keeping a very good watch. Because I want to go to my predictions now. I predicted, the question that I asked was, well, in the past, when I'd asked, will Kamala Harris win the US election? I always got yes. But there was a change a little bit before the election, where when I privately did the reading, I received the spiritual guidance. Don't ask, will she win the US election? Instead, ask, will she be president of the US in 2025? And now we're gonna drill down on my cards. I covered, was I right, was I wrong? Um, in the last video, I'm not gonna go over old ground, uh, I beat myself up enough over that. Um, in terms of all my other predictions with Trump, yeah, I'll stand by it. I feel that in 2025, something huge is gonna come for that man and it's a huge, huge downfall. Does he have cognitive issues? Absolutely yes. Are there people awaiting in the wings to, uh, to really push him aside and come forward themselves? Absolutely yes. I stand by my predictions. By the way, I predicted Iran was, uh, behind, uh, a particular assassination threat. Uh, and it's come out today that they, uh, will, please do not, um, do not try and take advantage of my, um, what's the word? Of my, uh, lack of heart at the moment or over the last few days to come in and take advantage and say, okay, well, you were wrong. No, no, I wasn't. And, uh, many of my predictions have, have already stacked up and will stack up in time to come. Okay, so now let's have a look via the tarot, maybe the rods. A lot of you have asked me to get the rods out. I said they read energies. Interestingly enough, and, uh, this is at twenty-four, at the twenty-four mark, uh, people, you'll find divination. Uh, up until then, you're finding background and gratitude and thank yous. Um, all right, let's just, let's just go here for a minute. The thing I find with the rods is they won't answer when there's an anomaly, when there's something going on that either I can't see or, uh, or it's not right. It's not the time to ask, ask it. Um, okay, so can you show me, uh, can you show me yes? Okay, can you show me no? Okay, all right. Whoa, you're very active today. These have got a hollow cylinder, my hands aren't touching it here. Something is, okay. The religious would tell me the devil. Okay, so are you a benign spirit? Yes. Okay, all right, thank you for that. I guess you would say that, uh, uh, let's see, uh, who's here? Who's here? Okay, so I do see, uh, what are they giving me? It's like a basket of flowers, all right. So it's like, uh, there's a lot of light, um, uh, it's a light being here with me. Is that correct? Are you a being of light? Are you a, an angelic type of being? Are you, uh, past over loved ones, friends? Uh, spirit guides, that's what it is. My spirit team is right here in the room and yes, they are. You see light workers? I work in the way I work, you work in the way you work. Okay. Thank you. Somebody's got a sense of humor. Alrighty, this is, this is fun. Thank you very much for the levity. Oh, dear viewers, all right, all right, let's go. All right, so did Trump cheat in the elections? Will it be, ooh, okay. All right, heart, now, I was about to ask, will it be revealed? Um, okay, will, will his cheating be revealed? Right. Okay, uh, will he be installed as president? Hmm, that's the worry, isn't it? Okay, all right, so will he be installed in, as president? Uh, that's, now I can't even ask that question because he's already installed himself as president. He's talking to Ukraine right now with Elon Musk. Okay, so, um, God, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to figure out. Uh, this is how, uh, mysterious the, the ways of spirit in the universe actually is. Yes, I know that. Yes, thank you. Okay, so will, uh, Vice President Kamala Harris be pre, president in 2025? Holy hell. Does Joe Biden's, there is another way. Does Joe Biden step down or does something happen to Joe Biden and mate and he makes her president? No, it's not that. Um, well, how does this happen if Trump installs himself as president and so does Harris? What's going on here? Um, will this eventually be, uh, sorted out? Yep, okay, so it will be, um, will there be civil war in America? Will there be civil war in America? And I understand if you don't want to answer it. Will there be a split down the middle? Uh, will there be huge rifts in America? Well, there already are. Um, will there be two separate type of camps in America? Yeah, uh, this is all part of what I was trying to say. I don't know how this is gonna pan out. Um, some of the light workers who got in touch with me said, time's not linear. But you see, you see what those rods were doing. Um, I'd rather they gave me the bat, you know, worst answer, you know, the worst case scenario, but you see what they were doing. Um, and they read energy. So it could be some people, something comes to light and people never accept that this was a fair and free election. And they will always think of Harris as a president in much the way that they thought of that with Hillary. Uh, despite everything, something big's coming for Trump in 2025. Uh, and I have faith that my predictions and I've told you about time not being linear, my predictions will come to pass. Now I want to dig, drill down on the cards that I got. When I asked, spirit, would Kamala Harris be, because you know, we gotta, we gotta dig down, ask the hard questions. Um, will Kamala Harris be president in 2025? I got the world card, which is the end of an old cycle and the beginning of a new, it's a yes card, the full card, very strong yes as a clarifier. It's new beginnings. And then I got the ace of pentacles, again, the seed of something new and a lot more stability. Now, so what some of the light workers were saying was your reading wasn't necessarily wrong, it's just that you put a time limit on it. I don't know, many will say, oh, that's a cop out, but, uh, a lot of my best predictions are Putin invading Ukraine, earthquakes, whatever. Um, flooding, huge flooding, um, you know, You know, some take, uh, time to come to fruition. Okay, so. I mean, I, I predicted that Putin, and then there's the nuancing, I predicted Putin would be, uh, would either. He was going to face an assassination attempt, many, many said, okay, well, that's an assassination. I said he could. Face an assassination attempt. Well, not long after that prediction, he had an incident, uh, where. He was in the car and somebody tried to get at him, there was, I think there might have been a shot. And, uh, he had to be evacuated by the, uh, his own security services. Yet people will say, well, you're wrong on that prediction, cause he wasn't assassinated. There's still time, there's still time. Alright, let's, let's go, let's go. Why, why, I'm just gonna ask for some clarifications. On the world card. Okay, I'm using the golden tarot for those that wanna know, and the, uh, what's it called? The, this one, the wild unknown tarot. I always get the six of swords mixed up with the six of rods. I'll try and be vi- vigilant there. The last deck that I used, some want to know there, particularly my German viewer. It is, thank you, the golden universal tarot there. Okay. Alright, let's get going. I mean, yeah, there's a lot to come. With the prediction that I made about the election, my final prediction, I said this is gonna be a very dark, dark period. Very dark period, um, I think we didn't know the half of it, did we? Alright, so, uh, let's just see. The world card, it means it's the last card in the major arcana. It talks about endings and new beginnings. Uh, let's see, why is the world card here? Why is the world card here? Alright, so we get the Eight of Cups, and that's walking away from what no longer serves us. This is all part of it too, viewers, you know, I'm resetting, I'm doing things in a different way, um. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm no longer, um, you know, my patience is a little bit thinner. Uh, it's a li- a little bit less, uh, for those that are going to impact in a negative way on me or my viewers, so. There's that. Uh, there's a focus on being, uh, becoming resistance channel, there's that. I'm also just in the middle of, I can't change my channel name because once you get that one hundred thousand. Subscriber plaque from, or award from YouTube, you can't change your channel name. But I'm, uh, creating a little graphic on my banner which says hashtag resistance in pink. People who know, know. Okay, so judgment and inevitability about walking away. From loss, and of course, this is what some light wa- lightworkers who in, um, who said be gentle on yourself, this is not a linear reading. They're talking about this term, uh, this current, if Trump is installed, um, if he installs himself. Um, this term is going to be a new beginning in the sense, the end of an old cycle, a new beginning in the sense that there's. This is a major ending of what has been happening in America, or at least, uh. There's one final chapter in the book that needs to be faced, and I know that's unpalatable. But it's an en- inevitability that there's a loss here, walking away from loss. And then we get the Five of Pentacles. I think that kinda sums up our mood right now with the world card. What comes after the world card? That is the full card. The full card was the other outcome that I got. So let's have a look at what the hell this full card means. What does this full card mean? There's a lot, I grant you, there's a lot to wade through in society, and there's a lot of discernment that need, that is needed. What's the full card? What is the full card? Show me the full card. Show me the full card. Show me the full card. Why did the full card show up in relation to the question I asked about Harris? Winning, or not winning, why did the full card, uh, I said, be the president in twenty twenty five? Why did the full card show up? Okay, so we've got, uh, the Four of, Four of Swords, which is retreat, we've seen. Uh, I take my hat up off to her. Uh, this is the Four of Cups disappointment, disappointment. One cup remaining. What is remaining? Strength, strength. And so, uh. What I did in my aftermath for the true believers, um, I, uh. I went to my reserves and I found the strength, and I think that's what we have to do. Uh, and I think we will, there's a lion roaring here and it's followed by the Ace of Pentacles. Woo, period of retreat, of disappointment, then strength and the Ace of Pentacles. Which leads me to my other clar- clarifying card, the Ace of Pentacles. Comes after the Ace of Pentacles. Yeah, Seven of Swords, lies and deceit. Uh, and then we get the Queen of Cups, something being revealed. To us. One more, and then we get the Eight of Rods, headlines, quickness, news coming. Okay, so. This is a process, please. Those who, uh, deal just in an, on an earthly level, understand. There is a new start coming, whichever way you wanna interpret that. What happened with the Ace of Coins? Well, again. The seed of something new, the seed of something new. What is this seed of something new? What is the Ace of Coins? What is the Ace of Coins doing here? There's the Ace, bear in mind, I use clairvoyance when I pull my cards. What is the Ace of Coin doing here? The moon and the sun are here, why is the Ace of Coins here? I think it's the sun. We get the Mother of Swords, that's the Queen of Swords, logic, planning, strategizing, and then death. The end of something, what is the end, what is this the end of? And then we get the Daughter of Swords, something new coming online. However hard women are finding it now. We're going to regroup the Ten of Pentacles. So we have, uh, we have an ancestral. Kind of strength and inheritance here to bring forward, and then we've got the Six of Cups, the past. You see the tree roots going right, right, right down. Uh, some would see this as the tree of life and, uh, going back to, not going back, but finding foundational, foundational. Um, I don't know, leverage or something like that. The Nine of Cups is the wish fulfillment. So. Complex, isn't it? Complex. The Daughter of Cups, there's a, a surprise, the. The crossroads is at the base of the pack, and there's the sun, and there's the Ace of Swords. There's the moon. Okay, so those three cards are very relevant, along with the High Priestess. Something is coming to light. There's my Russian card again. So I'm gonna say, uh, we're not done with Russian interference just yet, in your election. Okay, we're not done with it yet. Expect, expect news to emerge further than just the bomb threats. About how Russia interfered in America's elections. Expect that to come. Okay, uh, thirty eight, I think I'm, I've had enough. I'm, I'm going to on Tuesday. Drill down onto, into the, uh, did Trump cheat, did Elon cheat? Uh, also want to, oh, uh, and also this Florida GOP, um, operative, uh, who's, who the. They, they've raided the, um, uh, Criminal Division, FBI, Secret Service. Let's just draw that. Is that connected with the election? Now, I'll, I'll put a link underneath the channel to the story. Uh, the IRS was there, so that, y- you know, there's a tax thing here, uh, the, uh. The Criminal Division, uh, or was it the Department of Defense's Criminal Division was there? Uh, this GOP operative in Florida is a friend of Flynn's, and, um, Mike Flynn. Uh, he was someone that I thought might have flipped. You know, so much could be going on. I wish I had the energy to read every day. Trump has gone very quiet. Biden and Harris have gone very quiet beyond the initial, um, the initial things. So, um, let's just see what this, is this GOP operatives head, he's the head of the GOP in Florida. Is his arrest anything to do with the election? Is the GOP's operatives anything to do with? The election? Hmm, so we've got the Crossroads here, and then we've got the Daughter of Cups, which is the surprise coming through. Got the King of Pentacles is at the foundation of the reading, could be in relation to his business. But that's, that is my card for Trump, but let's not go too far. The Moon card is in the past, something that, uh, was below the surface has emerged. And we get the Five of Cups, loss. Uh, that's, you know, like the end, it's a, the minor arcad death. Minor Arcana Death Card, and there's the Strength Card coming through here again. Uh, we've got the Nine of Swords. In the present position, and the Sun of Swords, it's like tr- uh, that can be a trader, spy in the camp. We get the aid of, um, rods in the hopes and fears, so, yeah, we're gonna have more, more on this, please stay tuned on that. Uh, and the aid of Pentacles coming through, doing the work or something, could have something to do with money. But the aid of Pentacles and the star and the outcome, the Ace of Wands, they're all, they're all reasonably. Well, they aren't reasonably, they are, yes card. Did it have something to do with the election? But it's financial. It's financial. I didn't ask, was it connected with Russia? I said, did it have something to do with the election? There's a financial matter that they're looking at in connection with the election. The Queen of Swords looks like there's prosecution, the, uh, magician card is manipulation, and the Sword of Truth. So rather than being absolute and saying, yes, yes, everybody, it did, I'm gonna say there's an election financial matter here. Uh, that I think they are looking at. Uh, now, one more question and then I'm outta here. I'll come back on Tuesday, which is your Monday. With a whole other raft of questions, and we'll get started. So, let's go. Is there an investiga- is Biden-Harris government, the FBI, everybody else? Is there an election investigation going on? Are the Biden-Harris, I'm getting the Two of Swords, a crossroads. Uh, is the Biden-Harris government investigating possible Trump, Elon Musk, et al cheating? In the election? Is there an election investigation? I'm getting like a underwater carousel, um. Carousel, getting a carousel, what does that mean? Many, many, I think there are many investigations. I know there's a couple of hundred lawsuits, democratic lawsuits. Uh, Democratic Party lawsuits. Is the Biden-Harris government investigating? Cheating in the election? Is the Biden-Harris government investigating cheating in the election? So somebody, yeah, so there, there might be something to do with, might be something to do with ballots. Um, somebody cutting something up? I don't know, I'm just seeing, telling you. It's a roll of something cut in half. I think there's a specific investigation around ballots. Half ballot, something like that not being counted. I'm pretty sure they're, they're investigating. Well, it's another question, will it in, uh, change the impact? Are they launching a huge, Biden-Harris launching a huge investigation into potential cheating? Of, uh, of the twenty twenty four US presidential election. There's someone hitting a star, a rod, and it's breaking, shattering glass. Something pretty strong is coming. The Sun of, of Wands would indicate a smaller matter, uh, and the Father of Wands, um. The Father of Wands is boldly stepping forward, that's the King of, King of Wands. Before the courts, obviously, the courts were all to investigate things, but I asked about the government. Now, the foundation is, uh, the Four of, uh, Cups, disappointment, one cup remaining. Deals and contracts are in the past, okay. Somebody doing a deal, this is all a lot of twos at the moment. Two of Wands, something coming to fruition in time is crowning this reading. We get Trump's, Trump's card in the immediate future, the lovers, the cult card. The Ace of Wands, yeah, there, there isn't a, there is, there is an investigation, I think. The Queen of Swords, uh, Harris investigating, there's something, something they're investigating. Hopes and fears, of course, is the King of Pentacles. People are open to bribing, uh, and the Father of Swords, King of Swords, yes. There's an investigation. The Mother of Cups, something being let out of the cup. And the Six of Pentacles, loans and debts, giving and receiving help. There's, there's a, there's an investigation. There is an investigation right now. There's that Two of Swords, it's a crossroads time. We get introspection, Dark Knight of the Soul, the poor old hermit card. And overflowing, uh, emotion and the Six of Cups, the past. Money, money in the past, and there's that world card. Musk himself, payoffs. I feel that there is a, an investigation in relation to money. Right, I stand on my predictions. There you have it, and, uh, as I said, this is a resistance channel. Thank you, everybody. Sorry for the length of the, um, video, but there's a lot to unpack. We need to talk about all of this. You know, and, you know, there are talking heads pa- unpacking the Democratic Party and what it did wrong. Yeah, I, I, I agree, there's some, some, some of that going on because it should have been too big to rig, but it wasn't. Uh, there's also an acknowledgement of, um, a lot of people did vote for a convicted felon and, uh. Man found liable for rape and associate of Jeffrey Epstein's, the, the pedophile, deceased pedophile. A lot of orbs floating about here. Uh, there's a lot to unpack, and we'll, we'll continue to do that next week. But I'm going to enjoy my weekend. You do the same, you do the same. Bye for now.